I call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order June 15, 2015. Let us begin with a prayer by Ms. Moxley.
Let us pray. Holy and eternal God, thank you for giving us another day, and we ask that you bless all who are gathered here this evening to participate in the work of tonight's agenda. Thank you for the opportunity and privilege to serve others, to share together with respect and affection, and to be good stewards of the resources that the citizens of Onslow County have entrusted to us. Almighty Father, as we look upon the responsibilities that are before us, grant us wisdom to make good decisions, and strength, and patience to find the right time to act, for the right principles, and in the right way. Dear Lord, thank you for each member of this Board of Commissioners, for the sacrifice of time spent away from families and other endeavors in order to give of their time, talents, and energy in service to the citizens of Onslow County. Please grant them insight, guidance, and vision as they do their best to find solutions to the pressing issues of the day. Help us to see beyond the wall of individual perspective as we strive to serve our county with excellence, responsiveness, and efficiency. Merciful Father, be present with our armed forces throughout the world, and with their families, and sustain them during long periods away from one another. With favor and bounty, meet their needs, and watch over their loved ones. Lord, we thank you for our recent high school and college graduates. Grant them success for their efforts at every turn, and give them clear direction, and wisdom, purpose, and perseverance as they enter the next phases of their lives. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here this evening, hear us in a moment of silence. Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's always a pleasure to have our citizens before us as we are doing our job. At this time, if you have not silenced your phones or electronic devices, please do so. A warm welcome to Sheriff Hans Miller. We're always glad to have you among us, Hans. A few items of interest that citizens might want to pay attention to. We offer the citizens two opportunities to speak during each meeting. The first opportunity is for three minutes, and it needs to be focused on agenda items. The second opportunity is a five-minute, and can be on any item that the Board has authority over. If you have not signed up, you need to do so. The sign-up sheet's in the back of the room. You'll be called forward in the order that you signed up. When you first begin your comments, please state your name and your address for our clerk. While you are speaking, there will be no participation with the audience, and we, according to the Board's adopted procedures, ask that there be no applaud or outburst during each one's opportunity to speak. We hope that, and ask that you divert your comments directly to the Board as a whole, and the Board reserves any response to Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting. We also ask that you not endorse any candidacy or business in your comments, and we hope that your comments are civil, and you are permitted, even if your time has expired, to complete your sentence, your thought, and then continue to wrap your thoughts up and take your seat. At this time, I would ask if the Board would like to adopt the agenda.
Assume.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Assume.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. At this time, Mr. Manager, is there anyone signed up for the three-minute time slot for public comment?
We're retrieving the form now, Madam Chair. There are no individuals signed up for the first public comment period.
Okay. Since there's no one signed up for the first three-minute public comment, we will move into the public hearing. Before we open the public hearing, Mr. Manager, would you like to do an overview on what the public hearing is in reference to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to do so. This is item four, public hearing. This is a public hearing on the proposed 2015-2016 fiscal year budget, and prior to beginning of the public hearing, I'll provide a staff overview of this item as we normally do during public hearings. This is Onslow County Government Fiscal Year 15-16 Public Hearing Budget Overview. First of all, I'd like to start talking about how we got here, and sometimes it is a convoluted process, especially when we have so many different budgets to consider, and so much input to consider. So I'd like to begin by the phases of the budget process. There are seven phases, and these phases started about eight months ago. Generally, they can be broken down into probably four different areas. Number one and two is department research. When the department researches revenues and expenditures, and they enter revenue estimates and estimates for expenditures. Items three and four are when other specialty departments enter additional items into the budget. Asset Facility Management enters utility costs, and HR enters payroll and benefit costs for existing positions. That's also when we calculate the possible cost of new requests. Five and six, the budget team begins working on the budget. They meet with department or agencies, and then create a proposed budget to turn over to the governing body. And in North Carolina, all units of government, whether they're cities or counties, the budget's always simply a proposed budget until the governing body meets on that and actually acts on it and takes action. So this occurs over about an eight-month period of time. These are some of the major budget deadlines. We have met all of the deadlines to date. Departments began working back in November when budget forms became available to departments. There were a couple of deadlines in December when personnel requests were due for most departments. Capital requests were also due. Operational requests, February. Outside agency requests are due in March, and a lot of people don't realize that county governments, and especially Onslow County governments, we fund outside agencies, and we generally fund through two different types of money, either general fund money, or for outside agencies that meet a tourism purpose or a tourism mission, we can fund through the occupancy tax, and that's tourism. Board of Education have a special deadline established by statute. North Carolina Journal statute says that they do not need to provide us a budget until May 15, and so we do know that by May 15 of every year, we will have that budget in hand. April and May, the budget team starts working in earnest. The budget team is a cross-departmental team of individuals that meet together, and we try to go through all of the hundreds of pages of documents. The budget is due to the Board by June 1, and that's also a statutory date. We were able to meet that date. The governing body reviews in the month of June, and generally, the budget adoption is by June 30. If it is not adopted by July, then continuing resolutions have to be put into place. So obviously, we try to make sure that the governing body has all the information necessary to adopt in June if they so desire. Governing body guidance, we certainly know that this is the governing body's budget, so we want to make sure that we receive guidance from the Board and that we follow that. First of all, that we follow conservative financial practices, and that's an absolute necessity in today's day and age, when we have been through a recession, and when we're cognizant of the fact that other units of government around the country have not fared so well. Some have gone into bankruptcy in the western part of our nation, and so we need to follow conservative financial practices. In North Carolina, we have a group called the Local Government Commission, and they oversee a large amount of what we do, so they make sure that we don't, for instance, borrow money without being able to pay it back, and that we follow good budgetary practices. We meet all statutory requirements, of course, that we produce a balanced budget, that we comply with the Public Education Funding Formula, which in Onslow County is very important. This is a formula that was worked out between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education, and that's a formula which I'll cover a little bit more later. And then finally, of course, that we have no property tax rate increase. In addition to the governing body providing guidance, it's also my job as budget officer to provide guidance. And so there are a few guidelines that I gave to departments and to the budget team specifically this year. The first is zero-based budgeting method. So what is zero-based budgeting? What that means is that departments have to build their budget from a base of zero. It's not just what was happening a year ago. If you got $1,000 for a specific line item a year ago, you don't automatically get $1,000 and only justify $1,001 or $1,002. You start at zero, and I mentioned it several times, truth in budgeting, or build your number, or build your budget number, and what that is, is just show us as the budget team exactly how you plan on coming up with that dollar amount. For some instances, it's pretty easy. Asset Facility Management, for instance, can pull all the electric bills for the past year. We check with the utilities rate commission, see if there's going to be a rate increase, and apply that rate increase to utilities. For others, it's a little bit more difficult if you're talking about program matters as opposed to just, say, paying an electric bill. When that happens, that zero-based budgeting, it's up to the department, individual department, to build those budget numbers. And so the department puts in those requests, and puts in the revenues, and then meets with the budget team. This year, the budget team met with every department, agency, and county government. We conducted a line-by-line review of each budget with that department and agency, and department heads and county government will let you know that sometimes it took more than one meeting with multiple departments. We met with them multiple times. If in the first meeting, we wanted more information or more justification, we asked them to go back and input additional notes or additional transactions so that we could see exactly where that money was going to be going. We also need to maintain a four-year planning cycle. This is something that was started last fiscal year, and for Onslow County Government, it's a fairly new practice. What this is, is when you're able to set the property tax values during those tax reval years, you have some stability in your revenue stream, so you know about how much the tax base is worth in the county, and how much property tax revenue will be coming in. Well, in Onslow County, we revalue property every four years, so for a four-year period of time, you have some stability. In that next year, the following revaluation, you really don't know what your property tax base is going to look like until revaluation is finished. So in that intervening four-year period, what we're trying to do is set a tax rate at that initial reval year that would be able to last for that four-year period. So as you're looking at expenditures, they must be sustainable. And what do I mean by sustainable? Can you pay for them this year, and can you also pay for them the following year or the year after that without a tax rate increase, until we see what the next revaluation round is going to be? Now, as we look at the budgets, and as the budget officer and the budget team, we go through things, I mean, there's something that's pretty apparent. On the budget team, we're not public health nurses, and we're not landfill operators, and we're not restaurant inspectors, we're not paramedics, or child protective services workers. We are analysts, and we try to analyze the data that's presented to us by the departments. We make recommendations based on that data, and we also conduct research of the Board of Commissioners. So our job is just to analyze the data presented, to bring to bear our resources, many of us with over 20 years' experience, and to give that information to the Commissioners. We do all of that, though, inside a budget landscape, because there are also external forces that we have to be mindful of. So this is a topo map. For those of you in the audience that are familiar with those, there are highs and lows, valleys that we have to go through and be aware of, and some good points as well. One of the things that we have to be aware of is all of the different agencies or departments that we have to service. On this screen, you see 35 worthwhile and essential departments and agencies that are noted, and it's not even a complete list of everything that we do. Onslow County is not simply five commissioners, or one manager, or six or seven budget team members. We're 1,200-plus employees providing services. Dog bites, presidential elections, community college, paramedic ambulances, infectious disease, care for the aging, libraries, parks, jail, foster care, support for agriculture, we dredge waterways, we help veterans, we fund volunteer fire departments, rescue squads. Basically, we are the front line of governmental service, not only for county government, but in many instances for state and federal government as well. And of all of those different agencies, about 80% of the activities that we undertake are mandated activities. Now, only about 18% of those are hard mandates that require a specified level of funding by, say, the state or the federal government. 62 might be soft mandates, so for instance, we must provide a board of elections, but the board of elections is not specified exactly how much money we would need to give the board of elections. 20% is completely discretionary. We also know in this budget landscape that we're not the biggest fish in the pond. We have to be mindful of state and federal governments and what's going on there, and later on, as I conclude this overview, I do need to make the public and the Commissioners aware of something that's happened as recently as Friday at the state level that does require some Commissioner discussion this evening to meet a deadline imposed by the state. So having said that, let's look at some budget details. First of all, the total request from all sources was about $211 million. There are $6.6 million not funded, or not recommended to be funded by the budget team. The all-funds-proposed budget, and that includes enterprise funds, which are the business-like funds of the county, like the airport and solid waste, that totals $204 million. The general fund budget's $195 million. The general fund budget, it was actually erroneously reported in the paper that we were hitting the general fund for $195 million. I assure you, we're not hitting the general fund for $195 million. The general fund is the fund that property tax goes into. We are using some of the general fund to balance the budget, but the total fund of the county is $195 million. And I did want to make that point, because I imagine some of our former finance officers in the community might have immediately passed out upon reading that section of the newspaper, and we're okay. So looking at revenues, we certainly have a wide variety of revenues. Property tax is about 44% of what we take in in terms of revenues, and a lot of people believe that it's a lot more than that. I've actually been told that, you know, property tax funds county government, but if you look at what's on the screen here, we also have sales taxes, restricted intergovernmental. We also do use fund balance permits and fees, a small sale of capital assets. So we have a wide variety of revenue streams that we do take in. Sales tax is very important for Onslow County. It's not as important in other counties or other municipalities around the state, but we are a commercial center. And if you think about, you know, where in a 50-mile radius of Jacksonville is there everything that we can find on Western Boulevard, and where people come to spend their money? So sales tax is very important for us. About 18.36% of our revenue comes from there. Restricted intergovernmental, 15.53%. Restricted intergovernmental, that certainly includes, like, federal funds that comes to the county, and those federal funds are specifically earmarked for social services programs or things like that. But restricted funding might also include something like tourism money. That's an occupancy tax charged to hoteliers, and so that tourism money comes in, and it can only be spent for tourism-related activities. And we do have some tourism-related activities in the budget. For instance, there was a Swansboro Gazebo request. That's wholly funded through tourism money, and tourism money can only be spent for something like that. No general fund money is spent for that activity, and some others. In terms of expenditures, there are three big areas of expenditures, and several smaller areas of expenditures laid out in the budget, and we track these every year like this. So you can go year to year and see how is Onslow County spend its money in terms of public education, or public safety, or human services, environmental protection, et cetera. Public education is the single largest chunk of that pie that goes out the door, and that's 33.05% of our budget. Public education includes not only the K-12 Onslow County Public School System, but it also includes Coastal Carolina Community College. Human services, a lot of mandates in human services. Department of Social Services, or the Health Department. We also have senior services, veteran services, 24.46% of our expenditures. And then public safety, 17.38% of our expenditures. Public safety includes, of course, law enforcement, sheriff's office, jail, paramedic, ambulance service, et cetera, U-911 communications. So let's talk a little bit more about those three big areas, because if you looked at that chart, those are a really big hunk of everything that we do. Public education. First of all, the K-12 public education system saw the single largest increase of agencies or departments in the budget. Now, in North Carolina, Boards of Education are separate units of government, so they do not report to the Board of County Commissioners. They are separately elected Board of Education. There is a negotiated funding formula that's based on a couple of objective factors that the county and the school system, as two separate units of government, worked out some time ago. One is the statewide average per pupil appropriation. So we look at the last-known average per pupil appropriation of all the counties in North Carolina, and this year, it went up from $1,742 to $1,755 per student. The number of students in the school system also rose, and when you add those together along with an increased appropriation for the capital maintenance fund of the school system, which was $400,000, it comes up with $1,489,000. Now, what does a formula like that do for Onslow County as a community? Well, if you're like some of our sister counties, and the county and the school system basically come to the point where they cannot agree on funding, the remedy afforded to the school system by law is that it takes the county to court. And that happens, and has happened, across the state, and it sometimes the county wins, and it sometimes the school system wins. And sometimes, in a court of law, there have been larger awards to the school system than even the amount asked for. So where you have two separate units of government, this check and balance of the ability of the school system to take counties to court is the remedy. That's actually been questions and fought, I suppose, at the General Assembly. There may be some legislation in the future to change that, but right now, that's not the case. In Onslow County, there's budgetary certainty. You're able to know that the school system is not going to come back to the county for money if some other source of funding falls short, and the past, there's been state discretionary reductions, for instance. The state will come in after they adopt their budget and say, "Well, school system, we'd also like for you to turn in another million dollars." Under this formula, the school system and the county knows, what you get is what you get, and if something else happens that's beyond the control of the county or whatever, then you need to figure that out some other way, but this is the sole amount that you're getting. Coastal Carolina Community College has asked for an increase as well. They ask actually for an increase far in excess of this amount. $500,000 is set aside, $100,000 for a public safety training area, and $400,000 to relocate a cosmetology program, which I understand will give them more parking on campus. So basically, just that amount alone is 1.98 million of the 6.4 million budget increase in the area of public education. Consolidated Human Services. We're really proud of the fact that we've been able to consolidate human service agencies and departments. Before consolidation, the Health Department, the Department of Social Services, they worked basically for separate boards. They did not work specifically and directly for the county administration and the Board of County Commissioners. Under consolidation, we're able to maximize some efficiencies across different departments, and you see this this year in the budget. Social Services saw a decrease of $662,000, and at the same time that we decreased their budget, we were still able to fund five new positions. We were able to code them such that 75% of the funding is from a federal grant, and 25% of the funding is from their existing budget after that decrease. At the same time, in the Health Department, there was an increase of $623,040. That was mainly offset by the decrease in DSS inside Consolidated Human Services, and the reason for that increase was that we were able to do a full-year implementation of the salary study, and that's an ongoing, multi-phase salary study that allows public health nurses, for instance, to be paid according to the market. We had a large turnover, as our health director will attest, in our public health field and medical field. Senior Services also had an increase of about $100,000. In public safety, emergency services, you see a decrease there of $203,000. That's mainly because of a reduction in vehicle maintenance being moved out of that department for maintenance on ambulances into the vehicle maintenance department, so the money is still in the budget to repair ambulances, it's just located in a different spot. In addition, there was some non-reoccurring, non-capital equipment of $35,000, and professional services reduction of $125,000. So money was spent in 2015's budget that did not have to be recurring in 2016. So once again, under zero-based budgeting, if it's not recurring, that money was cut out, and so they were able to bring that in under budget as last year. Volunteer Fire and Rescue Agencies, we really looked to the Fire Rescue Commission for recommendations on that. The recommendation of the Fire Rescue Commission was to increase $141,000 for contributions to volunteer fire and rescue squads. And one thing that the volunteer fire and rescue agencies do, and through especially our first emergency responder services, is to keep homeowners' insurance rates low. Without our volunteer fire departments, a homeowner's insurance rates would be much higher, and so we're supporting volunteer fire departments in order to maintain insurance rates as low as possible. Of course, also in public safety, you have the sheriff's office. There has been a lot of media focus about the sheriff's office and the jail, so this evening, I would like to spend a little bit more time talking about the Justice Center and funding, and the sheriff's office fund. Center and funding and, and the sheriff's office funding in general. I think it's important to look at trending. And, and as departments come to, come to meet with us, there's something that I know all the department heads heard me say or, or heard others in the budget team say, "Show me a five-year trend." So, we would look at a line, "Show me a five-year trend, show me a five-year trend." What, what have we been spending and what have you asked for, basically? So, going past just an individual line item and looking at a whole, a whole department or in this case, two departments, the Onslow County Sheriff's Office and, and the jail and as well as narc funds, there's a narc department in here as well, narcotics department. Looking at that all combined, you see a difference in 2011 to 2016 proposed. In 2011, combined funding was about $12.6 million and 2016 is $19.9 million. Over that course of time, it's a 57% increase. Now, I will say both here and in the next two slides, there's one major thing that happened in that period of time that vastly changed what we needed to do in public safety and funding the sheriff's office and the jail. And that was the opening of the new jail. So, there was a, a big jump because of that specifically. And you'll see that played out in a couple more slides. Six-year staffing of sworn positions, now this is not in the sheriff's, excuse me, this is not in the jail, this is in the sheriff's office. This is a, a history of sworn positions. In 2010, there's 104 sworn positions. In 2016, manager recommended is 123. The increase in that time is about 18.3%. You'll see there's a, a major shift between sheriff's office and detention center. So, on the last chart, it was the sheriff's office, but here you see this massive jump in 2011 to 2012. And that was when the, the jail opened. The jail was a, a very different type of building than what Onslow County had had before. The old jail was overcrowded and we, we received notice from the Department of Health Human Services repeatedly that the county must build a new jail. At the time, we were housing inmates in other counties and so a new jail was, was built. The state came in and said, "You really need to have detention officers," and they pegged the detention officers at 119. Now, there were other jail employees that they recognized, but they were not in a detention officer status. So, they may have been laundry workers or clerks or things of that nature. But in terms of detention officers, it was 119 for 528 inmates. As of June 3, 2015, and I don't have data more recent than that, but on June 3, there were 286 inmates in the jail. And you see here the, the trend line of the amount of funding. We are recommending to the county commissioners that four additional detention officers be hired beyond the 2015 number as we move into 2016. One thing that's necessary in, in any department, of course, is that you be data-driven. And we try to be very fair in, in what we're doing in terms of looking at individual lines. There are two revenue lines, misdemeanor confinement fees and confinement fees that the budget team actually thought was, was low. And so, when the sheriff's office entered their revenues, the budget team increased revenues of misdemeanor confinement by $25,000 and increased revenues of the confinement fee by $50,000 based on performance and, and how many people we actually continue to have in terms of inmates from other counties and the state misdemeanor confinement program. In addition, there are six expenditure lines that were also increased beyond the initial sheriff's office request. That does not include utilities or benefits because utilities and benefits are entered by asset facility management in terms of utility cost, like the electricity we discussed earlier, and in terms of benefits entered by human resources. So, items, for instance, such as cell phones, we were able to adjust upwards or contract services or dues or capital outlay for new equipment, we were able to adjust those. Also, there were some other things that are included in the justice complex budget. There's $131,549 in the budget for an increase for a 1% cost of living adjustment for Onslow County Sheriff's Office and jail employees. And that's, that's the first time tonight I've mentioned a, a cost of living adjustment. And I'd like just a, a moment to, to expand on that because this is something that's offered to, to not all, but nearly all county employees during this budget cycle. If, if an employee received, for instance, a market adjustment last year, they would not receive a 1% cost of living adjustment. But a cost of, cost of living adjustment is meant to hold the buying power of an employee from one year to the next. And Onslow County has not always given cost of living adjustments. When we do, we do try to look at other agencies, the federal government, other units of government and see what they're doing. And we know, for instance, that the state of North Carolina this year is looking at a 2% cost of living adjustment for state employees, 2% cost of living adjustment for teachers. And we also know that social security has granted as of January 2015, a 1.7% cost of living adjustment for those that receive social security. So, we have not given a cost of living adjustment since the federal government did that, since the state of North Carolina is looking at theirs. We also know that locally, other units of government, like for instance, City of Jackson was giving a 1% cost of living adjustment. So, we, we take all of that into consideration when making a recommendation to the commissioners. So, that $131,000 is, is only for the Justice Center, the sheriff's office and jail. In addition, there's $776,397. That's an increase to payroll and that's at 86 hours per pay period per employee. Working with the sheriff's office staff, looking at how employees have worked since the November, December timeframe, we know that in the 2015 budget, which predates the current command staff and, and the current sheriff's administration, salaries were budgeted at about 80.5 or 84 hours in the department per person per pay period. But in November, December, we know that based on actual working hours, the working hours of the employees there exceeded that. So, as we go into the new fiscal year, we need to budget at the maximum number of, of hours that the Fair Labor Standards Act allows for each employee. And that's 86 hours per pay period for a law enforcement officer. So, altogether, that's $776,000. $78,246 for one new deputy and $238,424 for four detention officers. Now, in, in putting this together, I realize someone would say, "78,000 for one new deputy, that is a heck of a salary." And, and I'm sure that, that our deputies would immediately accept a $78,000 salary, but that actually is a budgeted number that is the midpoint of the salary range plus all benefits that the county pays for. So, retirement, supplemental law enforcement, retirement, et cetera. The $78,000 is budgeted at the midpoint so that the sheriff has hiring authority and discretion between the minimum and the midpoint of the salary range. And this is not unique to the sheriff's office. For vacancies that occur at time of budget, we always try to budget at the midpoint so that a person can be hired that may have experience in a position. So, the best candidate can be hired and you don't have to fill at the absolute minimum. You try to hire the best person for the job to provide service to the citizens. So, that 78,000 for, for one new deputy, that, that explains that. There's also support included in other county departments. While a lot's been said about the Justice Center, the fact is that, that it is in the ground now, it is on the ground now in downtown Jacksonville and, and we are paying debt on it. In fact, this year in fiscal year 16, we're paying $5,592,030 in debt service on that building, which includes the sheriff's office and the detention center. There's $600,000 inside vehicle maintenance for 23 new police-rated patrol units. And there's $244,000 in other items, and those are among different departments, leased vehicles and vehicle maintenance, drug screenings, pre-employment physicals, IT equipment in IT, veterinarian in animal services, janitorial supplies and asset facility management and vehicle maintenance money of $95,000. I would like to add that the vehicle maintenance money of $95,000 and, and janitorial supplies, et cetera, those are movements from all different county departments, centralizing in vehicle maintenance for vehicle maintenance and supplies and in asset facility management for janitorial supplies. But in, in the midst of these amounts of money that we're spending in support of these programs, the good news is that projections are that revenues have increased. So, between fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 16, we have seen an increase in revenues. This is, these are funds that have come in through the statewide misdemeanor confinement program and through us housing prisoners from other counties. And we're very thankful when our sister counties decide to send us inmates. So, you see that out of a $19 million budget in fiscal year 16 projected, we are able to cover about $2 million in revenues from the sheriff's office and the jail. Now, this is a chart that I've used before and just want to highlight some of the other major increases and what, what this budget as proposed does. I've mentioned the Board of Education, that's the number one dollar amount there. Paying classification market adjustments, that's a million dollars. The 1% COLA countywide is $650,000. Sheriff's Office in the prior chart, I noted it was $648,000. And tonight, I have quoted 553,252. The, the exact difference in that, and the reason I put that over there on the side in yellow, is the $95,000 in vehicle maintenance money that's moved out of the sheriff's office into vehicle maintenance. And once again, that was done, for instance, as I mentioned earlier, in emergency services for ambulances and everywhere. Coastal Carolina Community College, we talked about that for 500,000. Workers' compensation, we are self-insured for workers' compensation. We need to put aside another half million as we look at our claims history there. Board of Elections, there may be multiple elections this year and the director can tell you about those. And so, a presidential election and everything that goes along with that, we pay for poll workers, and that's not something that we do every year. So, it's cyclical. But when one of those presidential election years rolls around, we do have that large increase in Board of Elections. We have a scheduled transfer to the capital fund. We do that every year. That transfer to capital fund basically takes care of the capital reserve fund and it's calculated annually. Computer replacement program and Microsoft Office licenses, we're looking at a four-year replacement cycle for computers and, and we're looking at increasing our Microsoft Office license and, and making that so that more people can use Microsoft Office. Health account increase of $250,000 is through our health insurance, our health savings accounts. We have $187,000 set aside to hopefully look at some Burton Park roadway, maybe some cut-throughs and also clearing lots so that we can try to continue to sell lots here in Burton Park. By the way, that amount is coming exclusively, I mentioned restricted funding, that amount's coming exclusively from about $2 million inside the fund balance that is earmarked solely for economic development purposes. So, that's not money that could go to another department, it can only be used for economic development. Retiree insurance, we have a class of employees, no longer, we, we don't any longer offer this benefit, but some employees, some years ago, were offered retiree insurance benefits and there's an increased cost to that. And then, of course, we have some of that additional support we mentioned earlier to the sheriff's office, which has also changed with the vehicle maintenance going over to vehicle maintenance. So, having said all that, it, it does look like that, you know, we're talking about a $6.3 million increase from one year to the next. So, how are we really doing? If, if you're wondering how you're doing as an individual, you may go see your doctor. You may say, "Well, how am I, doctor? Can you tell me some tests? Can you give me some objective measurements about how I am I?" For a county, what we can do is we can look at, at the reports given to us by rating agencies, financial rating companies. And there are international financial rating companies that, that look at Onslow County specifically. Two of them are Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. Standard &amp; Poor's recently looked at Onslow County and have said that we have a high independent financial rating, they gave us a double A. But as late as April, they also issued a report regarding our financial status. They assessed management, they said management is strong with strong financial policies and practices. They assessed budgetary performance, they said budgetary performance is strong. And they also assessed debt and contingent liability and they said that that is also strong. So, basically, they looked at, they looked at us from top to bottom and, and have given us a good report. Our capital reserve funds is certainly something that they looked at. The capital reserve was implemented in 2009 by the Board of County Commissioners at that time. It looks at long-range financial plans and it includes generally two different areas, general government and the K-12 public school system. So, there are two separate capital reserve funds. And the general government capital reserve fund, for instance, built the building that we are all sitting in here tonight, the Onslow County Government Center. And, and it's also building the airport along with a lot of grant money that we were able to get from the FAA and the state. So, the current debt for all of those is about $187 million. But at the same time, if you look at our debt limit of $878 million, Standard &amp; Poor's did and, and we are well, well below our debt limit and our debt is well-managed. We don't do any debt without having a game plan to pay for it. Not, not all units of local government are like that. Some units of government get out there and, and overextend themselves. Maybe they get excited about one particular project or another and, and start building without thinking about how they would pay for it. Onslow County is, has not done that. We do have fund balance and, and that's always something that we answer every year. Fund balance is referred to as the savings account of government. 8% is required in North Carolina and ours is projected to be at 18% at the end of this fiscal year. Now, that includes two different things. So, it's not just 18% and all that money is in one location. It includes about 8%, which is unappropriated, which is, if you like to think of it, is still in the savings account. And then, 10%, which has been appropriated in the budget to balance the budget in fiscal year 16. So, about 10% of the monies that we have on hand, we're re-appropriating the balance of budget in fiscal year 16. And that's about $14.6 million. Now, we hope that we do not have to spend that money, but at the same time, since we do have a balanced budget requirement in North Carolina, we do have to budget from our fund balance to, to balance things. That covers a lot about what we have the authority to do right now. And it covers a lot about what's happening in the, in the existing budget. There is, however, an opportunity that's come open as of this past Friday, about 6:30 PM last Friday, we received an email from the North Carolina Association of Counties. I forwarded that email to the Board of Commissioners. The email concerned sales tax, and in Onslow County, sales tax is, is very important. Onslow County is unique. Of all the 100 counties that you see on the screen, Onslow is one of the few counties where about 40% of the landmass of Onslow County is not taxable. Now, there are some other counties with 40% of their landmass is not taxable, but a lot of times they're in the far western part of the state. So, the Great Smoky Mountains National Forest might run through one of them or the Cherokee Indian Reservation, et cetera. But, but here in Onslow County, we have, we have 40% of our landmass not taxable, but we still have a very high population that lives there. As opposed to, say, the Great Smoky Mountain National Forest where you have a high population of bear and deer, we have a very high population of citizens that, that demand services. And so, for us, when we can only tax from the property on about 60% of our landmass, one of those other methods that we turn to that's very important is the sales tax. Right now, we have an, an ability to give input back to the state through the North Carolina Association of Counties on sales tax. There's a House bill, House Bill 117, and inside that House bill, there are sweeping changes to state tax laws. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has requested that by tomorrow, the 16th of June, that counties in the state provide them some information on sales tax. Now, why is this important and, and why is this important as we look at a, a budget, a county budget? Because number one, we're looking at, depending on sales tax in the coming year's budget commissioners in fiscal year 16, but also, this may be an opportunity, an opportunity to, to gain revenue past the property tax that we're placing upon the citizens of Onslow County right now. One quarter cent of sales tax for Onslow County generates between 4.6 and 5.4 million dollars, depending on the calculation method used by the state. By comparison, one cent of property tax only generates $1.3 million. So, you can see that a sales tax is tremendously beneficial. Now, that legislation caps the local option sales tax at 2.5%. We're currently at 2.25%. So, there's only, under the way it's currently written, one quarter of a penny left available to Onslow County. But that one quarter of a penny could yield between 4.6 and 5.4 million dollars. In past, in the past, a past practice of this board, under Article 46, which Article 46 is the name of one of the last sales tax methods used by the county, or rather, allowed by the state to, to be voted on by the county. Under Article 46, the commissioners voted to roll back the property tax rate by two pennies and of the amount remaining, 50% was used for public safety and 50% was used for public education. There are many requests in this budget that did not get funded, they didn't make it to the budget team manager's recommendation stage. Requests from public safety, requests from public education that didn't make it there. We know that there is a future need and we believe that there might be an opportunity at this time. at this time to talk to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and put forward ideas about a sales tax. Only about 20, well, not about, only 27 counties out of 100, 27 counties out of 100 have managed to pass referendum on sales tax. The other counties have not been able to pass that. Onslow County, it took three tries, and the final try, the Board of County Commissioners at that time specifically earmarked sales tax. It's been my professional opinion that unless a county commissioner's board specifically says where the tax money is going, the public is much less likely to vote for it. Another possibility would be sales tax by resolution versus referendum. And that's something that I had written Senator Brown about last week as well. In conclusion, I would say that this budget, as presented to the board, does not fund all the requests of departments. It does not fund all the requests of outside agencies. It does not fund all the requests of outside agencies that rely on general fund property tax money. And it does not fund all the requests of outside agencies that rely on occupancy tax or tourism money. However, it does meet the directions that we have received from the Board of County Commissioners. It allows continuing operations with no tax increase. And now, as of Friday, we do know that as we move into the future with House Bill 117, currently before the General Assembly, there is some hope that we might have additional revenues in the form of sales tax that would allow the county commissioners more flexibility to address some things that the board might want to look at. That is the overview of the budget, and prior to any vote of the county commissioners, there must be a public hearing. Madam Chair, with your permission, we would move into the public hearing.
Opened public hearing, and thank you for that presentation, Mr. Manager.
The public hearing for the 2015-2016 budget was advertised by the clerk to the Board of Commissioners in a paper having general circulation in this jurisdiction. The public hearing was set for this evening, Monday, June 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM, or as soon as reasonably could be done thereafter, in this location. All statutory requirements of advertising this public hearing have been met. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the proposed 2015-2016 fiscal year budget. Citizens have an opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners for no more than five minutes per speaker on the topic of the proposed 2015-2016 fiscal year budget. I would ask the clerk to the board and staff to keep time. At this time, the first individual that signed up to speak on the proposed 15-16 fiscal year budget is Mr. David Harris of 188 Deer Road, Hubert, North Carolina. Mr. Harris, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Good evening. My name's David Harris, I live at 188 Deer Road in Hubert. I'm here to talk to you about your budget proposal for sheriff's office specifically. Since I don't live in the Jacksonville area, as most of the citizens really don't in this county, we rely on our sheriff's office. We have been fortunate enough to receive somebody, I believe now, who will be, let's just say, a little more amenable to our needs in the county. In the past, we have received extremely poor service in the Hubert area, and I have contacted board on several occasions over this. In my particular case, unfortunately, I have somebody who has moved into my neighborhood from another county, where they were forced out. And let's just say, for the last two years, they've created a lot of havoc in our community. Fortunately, we've come a long ways the last two years in dealing with these people. We've got several of them in jail, several of them have left the county because we've been on them. But the biggest thing we need is need more cops on the street. I need more deputies that can be there. The current policy of putting a deputy in the zone where he's going to remain for a year or more is a great step forward, as far as I'm concerned. Because before, I would call, I'd get somebody who knew nothing about my neighborhood, never had dealt with the families involved, has no clue where he's starting. Now, at least I have somebody who will know identities, what's going on, and can keep a running total of the problems, you know what I mean? That will help us a lot, it really, truly will. But the fact is, we need more people on the street. I know nothing about the detention situation, so I don't know about the need there in that office, but I know we need more on the street. Right now, we have houses being burned down, we have people being broken into, we have houses where the doors are being kicked in, and it takes 10 to 15 minutes for response because you don't have enough people on the street. Now, I'm not asking for a bodyguard, as I heard was quoted, somebody mentioned in the paper. Whether that's true or not, I honestly don't know. I kind of laughed at it, but we do need to be able to sleep in our homes without having a shotgun loaded next to us. And I have had one for the last two years. So I need your help, please. Please help us, please give us the support we need, so we can at least live at peace in our homes. Thank you.
There are no other individuals that have signed up for the public hearing for fiscal year 2015-2016. With no other individuals signed up, the public hearing is hereby closed. Madam Chair, per general statute, the item of the fiscal year 15-16 budget is available for commissioner discussion, consideration, and direction.
All statutory requirements have been met. What's the board's pleasure in reference to the budget?
Motion to approve the budget.
I have a motion to approve the budget as submitted. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a second. All in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to discuss a few things.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, we'll have some discussion.
First of all, I'd like to thank our staff for putting the budget together. You guys worked hard, you did a good job. All of the recommendations that were made and presented to us in the workshop, I thought were very well put together and well perceived by the board. There was a couple of things that I didn't particularly go along with or like, but all in all, the staff did a good job. There's a lot of things in the budget that I really like. No tax increase, for one thing. That's something that the board gave direction to our manager for. Another thing is a 1% pay raise for the employees. I think that was an ongoing thing from the year before, the 1%. I think that was a good move. 1% is not a lot of money, but still, in that budget of the 1%, also included a pay raise for the commissioners. Now, that I did not agree with. I don't feel like the commissioners ought to vote theirself a raise. I think the raise should be voted for and presented, and go for the next board that's coming on if we want to move the pay rate or pay range up. And we're not talking about a lot of money. It's not a lot of money at all, just a few pennies or a few dollars. But anyway, it's the idea of it, and that just never has set well for me to approve something like that. Proper funding for the education system, I think we really went out to fund our schools and the college and all the educational needs through the funding formula. Thanks again to Jeff and the staff for putting that together in the plan that we are working on now. And the market adjustment for employees, we have been in a position before where market adjustment for employees, some employees were making a whole lot less than people in other areas of their professions, so we had to make that adjustment. There's a lot of good in that budget. Thank you, Jeff, for putting that together. There are some things, though, that I feel like really needed to be addressed. It got to workshop, and this was the manager's recommendation in the workshop. There were some changes made that I didn't support, but I think needs to be addressed either now or down the road. And one of them was, as the speaker spoke from, I guess, from Hubert, but I looked at the sheriff's department data, and the data for the calls for service from 2013 to 2014 increased by 7.5% for calls for service. And our county sworn officer staff for the sheriff's office has been at 119, 121, and 122 for the last couple of years for employees and sworn officers. Now, the detention section is a whole lot different ballgame. I don't know about detention and what needs to go in there. I know that we needed a lot of eyes watching a lot of people in there, but if we got a 7% increase, 7.5% increase in calls for service, and if we were to increase the sheriff's sworn staff by 7%, that equates to 8.5 officers additional. Now, the sheriff initially asked for 24 people. Now, we just couldn't, there's no way that we could fund 24 additional people. I just, we just didn't have the money to do that, didn't have the money to put forward to do that. But there was an agreement by staff to fund four detention officers and one deputy, with the sheriff compromising and saying that he could probably get by with four deputies, and with vacation and everything, sick leave. I thought that that was not an unreasonable request, but anyway, it got to workshop, and it got turned around in workshop, and of course, we're voting on the budget now. So that got changed, but there was a lot of examining and looking at that. But I really feel like the three deputies were, three additional deputies right now were justified. But that's my personal opinion about that. The other item that I really looked at was economic development. We had funded and manager and staff had recommended the $175,000 for economic development. There were some moves in the workshop that changed that from the $175,000 to be funded for the whole year, but only funded for a period of six months, and then we look at it and reevaluate it. I hope that does not send the wrong message to our Economic Development Board and our Economic Development Staff, because everywhere I go, every meeting I attend, everybody comes up and asks me, they say, "What are you doing in economic development? How are you bringing in industry? How are you bringing in jobs? We need jobs, we need industry, we need the property out here at Burton Park sold." I know that economic development maybe hadn't been communicating as well as they have been in the past, or the way we maybe like them, but they have done some good things. The Shell Building got sold out here, and we've got that money back into the pot, and it's going to be upgraded now, and we'll be getting the sales tax on that building. They even brought in the rail, the possible rail connection that everybody else asked for when they're looking to locate here business-wise. They asked three things, they say, have you got rail, have you got interstate, or have you got a deep water channel? So the more we can offer in that way, the more we can bring in jobs, and the more we can bring in industry. So I'm hoping that will pan out and work with everything to help improve jobs here also. But anyway, that is my take on it, and I would hope that we can get together with the sheriff and later on, after the budget's over with, and really evaluate things again, and maybe look at economic development, and take that six-month stigmatism out of economic development, because I think it gives them the idea that people that's working there that they're only going to be funded for a half a year. It's possible that they only will be funded a half a year with that particular stipulation in the budget. So anyway, that is my take on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion? I would just like to clear up a couple points that Mr. Bright brought up. The decision to fund four detention officers and only one sworn officer was because of the list that was submitted by the sheriff's office as to their priorities. So that's what they said their priority was, and I want to honor what the sheriff says is his discretion, his knowledge of where he needs the manpower. So I think if that were not, if that were not the priority list, then we had an opportunity to change that. The budget is on the table, if there's no further comments. All in favor of the budget as it stands, raise your right hand. All opposed? Budget passes four to one. Moving forward, we had nothing pulled off the consent agenda. Now, we have any public comment for the five?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we need to do something on that quarter cent sales tax tonight, Jeff? Because you said it was time-sensitive to the 16th, which is tomorrow.
Yes, sir. The North Carolina Association of Counties has asked for any specific guidance to them, and in light of the budget and the findings of the commissioners on the budget, whether or not you believe that the county should give guidance on sales tax, which is one of our major budget revenue streams, the deadline for that feedback is now tomorrow, as of Friday.
I would make a motion that we look forward, going into that quarter cent sales tax.
That is not on the, not an agenda item. Can we just give a polling of the board, the consensus of the board at managers' comments?
Yes, you may.
Very well. Let's move ahead with the five-minute public comment before we move into manager comments.
There are no individuals signed up for the second public comment period, Madam Chair.
Then let's move into managers' comments. And since the topic has been broached for the quarter cent sales tax, I will poll each board member individually. Ms. Williams, your feelings about moving forward with the quarter cent sales tax?
I am in support, and future, this may allow some of the other needs for the community, so I fully support.
Mr. Jarman?
Move forward.
Mr. Bright?
I move forward with it. I was in favor of it in 2013 when we were looking at the funding formula to use sales tax. If we could get a legislation that would give us a resolution to do it on our own, I think that if the state of North Carolina gives the counties and the county commissioners the authority to vote on a property tax, I think they ought to give us authority to fund other revenues that's available to us since our county, like Cumberland County, Wayne County, and other counties that do not have land masses that they can tax, I think they ought to allow, or I think there ought to be legislation to allow counties to have that special resolution to enact a quarter cent sales tax, as long as it is earmarked for education or public safety. And in some cases, if we have to, we can ask them to, whatever revenue that we gain from it, to maybe reduce some of the burden on our property owners, reduce property taxes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Move forward.
I concur, move forward. Do you have anything else at managers' comments?
And only that I'd like to thank staff and departments and agencies for all their work in submitting over the last eight months. I appreciate it very much, and thank you commissioners for your guidance.
You bet. Commissioner comments. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And that is, again, I would like to just reiterate what Commissioner Bright stated. As far as the staff and the due diligence and the time, expertise, and all the department heads that had to come together, it's a very critical timeframe for people. And the workshop, the budget workshop, there was a lot of conversation, those of you that may not have attended, but there was a lot of conversation, a lot of questions asked as far as data to support certain requests. And as a commissioner, I feel very strongly that when I vote on something, when I take an opinion and make an opinion on something... an opinion and make an opinion on something, I must have data to support, to be objective in my decision-making with my one-fifth of the vote as a county commissioner. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my commissioner.
Comments?
Yes.
Mr. Bright?
I have nothing. Enjoyed being here tonight. I'm glad everybody come out before the meeting, and the folks that did come up and speak in their public hearing. This is what it's all about. Let us know how you feel. Thank you for coming, and good night, and try to stay out of the heat.
Mr. Jarman?
Couldn't do it.
Vice Chair? I, too, would like to just re-brief, if I possibly could. It's a tough situation when you don't have enough money to meet everybody's needs and desires. It's tough, and tough questions have to be asked. And even in your own life, you have to prioritize. Will I pay my wind and hail insurance this year? You know, will I buy that new car that my family needs? There's tough decisions that have to be made. Nobody says that the five of us up here have an easy job, but we have a job that has to be done. And I believe that this board has done the best job that they could. We've done it fairly. We've done it without prejudice, and we've done it with the facts that were presented to us and the assistance of the staff. So thank you, staff. To Mr. Harris, I sympathize with you in your neighborhood's crime, and I'm sure if you speak with the sheriff, he will utilize those assets that he has to assist you. Because even though he may not have all the assets he wishes that he had, I'm sure he will utilize the ones he has to the maximum. So with that, if there's no further before this board, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So we move.
I have, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.